I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of March 15, 2018, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Excused.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Meritato.
Here.
Trustee Pocak.
Here.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Would you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I guess, Trustee Schmidt, you know it's your turn.
Showtime.
Yep.
Join us Saturday, April 7, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon for coffee with the mayor and village board. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Red light cameras have been installed at the intersection of Glen Allen Road and North Avenue. There are two cameras that are monitoring for violations eastbound and westbound on North Avenue, including the turn lanes. Signs have been posted since last August indicating that the intersection is red light camera enforced. There was an initial education period, and now enforcement by means of a citation has started. If you violated the traffic signal on or after December 30, 2017, you may have a ticket coming in the mail. Our goal is to reduce the number of red light running incidents and to save lives. Therefore, we urge the driving community to be safe, stop on red. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
On Saturday, March 24, Peter Cotton Tail will make a visit to Safety Town, located at 301 Civic Center Plaza. He will be dropping off an extra-large supply of treat-filled Easter eggs for children up to eight years old. Age-specific Easter hunts, Easter egg hunts, are as follows. 8:15 a.m., children five years and younger with adult assistance required. 9 a.m., children six to eight years old with adult assistance required. 9:30 a.m., children five to six years old, children only. 10 a.m., children seven to eight years old, children only. This hopping event, hopping event, is free, and no registration is required. For additional information, contact Tanya Mako at (630) 909-5459. Join us on Saturday, March 24, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Center for Senior Citizens for our annual breakfast with the Easter Bunny. All-you-can-eat pancake breakfast will be served that includes sausage and a beverage. Photos with the Easter Bunny will also be available. No preregistration is required, and the event fee is paid at the door. Adult breakfast costs $5; children's breakfast costs $3; and pictures for $2. For more information, call (630) 260-6060.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a variety of seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Parks Recreation and Facilities Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many others. Gain valuable experience and build friendships that will last a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact Human Resources at (630) 909-5357. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Meritato.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Register today for the annual Glendale Lakes Golf Club Spring Fling. This year, the event will be Saturday, April 14, and Sunday, April 15. This four-person scramble is limited to 36 teams per day. The cost of playing the event is $340 per team. Golfers will receive 18 holes of golf with a cart, breakfast, lunch, dinner, drink ticket, raffle ticket, and a tea prize. For more information, please contact Glendale Lakes Golf Club at (630) 260-0018. Registration is open until Saturday, March 31, for spring outdoor soccer. Practices begin the week of April 9, and the season runs through the middle of June. Those who register after the deadline will be charged a $25 late fee and placed on a waiting list. The success of our soccer program relies heavily on our volunteer coaches. If you are interested in being a volunteer coach, stop by the Sports Hub and find out and fill out a volunteer coach form. All volunteer coaches receive a $50 credit to the Sports Hub for any future program. For more information on the youth soccer or volunteer coaching, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pocak.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Stop by Glendale Lakes Golf Club on Friday, March 30, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for our last fish fry of the season. Try some great food at a great price. Enjoy our all-you-can-eat fish fry, soup, and salad bar, or order appetizers and other items off our new menu. Call (630) 260-0095 and make your reservations today. To enable an efficient and effective street sweeping schedule, parking on streets is prohibited during the months of April and May between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on one specific day. Color-coded no-parking signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village website. For any questions on a street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester.
You're welcome.
Trustee Schroder.
Thank you, Mayor Jackson.
You're welcome.
Register today for the Chip 'n Casino Trip. This three-day, two-night trip leaves the Center for Senior Citizens on May 17 and returns on May 19. It's located in Escanaba, Michigan. Now, this resort features two Towers of Rooms with an indoor pool, a sauna, and a casino. The price also includes a ticket to see the world-famous Terry Fader Show. Now, Terry was a winner on America's Got Talent. For more information, contact the Center for Senior Citizens at (360) 260-6050. Also, remember to register today for the Mother and Son Dance. Moms, put on your dancing shoes, and boys, come show off your best dance moves if we have a night at the Oscar. Enjoy an activity-filled evening, complete with dinner and dessert. This dance is Friday, April 13, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at Glendale Lakes Golf Club. Please register by April 6. The registration fee is $48 for residents and $58 for non-residents, and $22 for each additional son. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we have two proclamations. First one being a proclamation to proclaim March 24, 2018, from 8:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. as Earth Hour. Next proclamation is to proclaim the week of March 21 through the 25, 2018, as Shin Young Performing Arts Show Day. Days. So if there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. Thank you. Up, we have one more proclamation, and that is a proclamation to proclaim April 3, 2018, as National Service Recognition Day. So I can sign that one, too?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I am pleased to announce yet another special recognition bestowed on the village from the Government Finance Officers Association, GFPA. On February 22, 2018, the GFPA awarded the Village of Glendale Heights with a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is the CAFER. This is the 35th consecutive year in which the village has received this award. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The CAFER has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFER. GFPA is a major professional association servicing the needs of nearly 19,000 appointed and elected local and state governmental officials. The association is headquartered in Chicago, Illinois, with offices in Washington, D.C. My sincerest thanks to the executive staff and each member of the Finance Department for their hard work, making it possible for the village to receive this outstanding recognition. So, Bill, please share our thanks to all our staff, and that's on behalf of the mayor board and all the residents of Glendale Heights. Thank you for watching our money so carefully. Next, I have several appointments to committees or commissions tonight. So if you bear with me, the first one, I would like to make the following appointments to the Citizen Corps Council. That would be Rich Cassidy, who's deputy chief of Glenside Fire District, and Kevin Hooper, who is Queen Bee School District 15 representative. No, District 16 representative. That's a typo. I would also like to make the following reappointments to the Citizen Corps Council. Chester Pocak, trustee District 5, who's the chair. Doug Flint, police chief. Keith Knouts, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. Jeff Janus, chief of Bloomingdale Fire District. Jill Peteras, AMITA Health Adventist Glen Oaks Hospital. And Armand Gess-Piro, Markort School District 15 representative. So a concurrence with these appointments would be greatly appreciated.
Do you need a motion?
So, Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those appointments are done. But we have more. Next, I would like to reappoint to the Police Commission Esther Wilk, who is sitting here tonight, and... Stand up, Esther. Go ahead. Thank you. And then I would also like to make the following reappointment to the Police Pension Board of Wolfgang Beyer. So if there is no objection to these... Motion would be in order to concur with the appointments. Trustee Pocak.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The appointments are up to date. Chief Flint, it's now your turn.
Thank you, mayor and board.
Thank you.
Mario, come on over. We currently have one vacancy within the police department, and our police commission, Chairman Schwedner, Esther Wilk, and Vic Macias, have been tirelessly working to get us a qualified applicant. They've spent the last couple of months through interviews and psychological exams and everything else to bring us to Mario. So Mario is being sworn in tonight, Marie. Sworn in tonight as our news police officer. He's going to be badge number 399. Yeah, we're getting up there. Mario is represented here today with Grandma... See my glasses. Joanne Masio-Pinto. His dad, Mario. His mom, Wendy. His brother, Richard. His brother, Ryan. And his godfather, Steve, is also here. So thank you all for coming. No, we appreciate you. You'll find he's going to have a great place to work. He's going to have a lot of fun working here, and we're proud to have him. So...
Please raise your right hand. I, Mario Masio-Pinto.
I, Mario Masio-Pinto.
Having been appointed to the office of probationary police officer...
Having been appointed to the office of probationary police officer.
...in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, in the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
The Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, in the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of probationary police officer to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of probationary police officer to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Mario says his thanks. Just so you know, he's a graduate of Lombardi's High School. He resides in Lombard. He's a graduate of College of DuPage. Comes to us with some really great work experience. He's currently auxiliary police officer at Downers Grove Police Department. Mario, this is your badge, badge number 399. Wear that proudly. Mario will start tomorrow with all the HR paperwork and uniforms and all that other kind of stuff. So you'll be seeing him around for a couple of weeks. He starts the academy April 4th.
Second.
April 2nd. Starts the academy on April 2nd, so he'll have a couple of weeks to get adjusted. So when you see him around, say hi.
Great. Welcome, Mario.
With your permission, Mayor, we'll break for some pictures.
Sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
So this meeting is recessed. I'd like to call this Village Board meeting back to order. We are now ready for public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, you have the consent agenda before you. Trustee Schmidt.
Move approval of the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pocak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business, so new business. Before we start, we have had a request from the petitioner to continue new business items number one and two until the May 3, 2018, Village Board meeting. Is there a motion to continue items one and two until May 3, 2018? Trustee Pocak.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pocak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
New business items number one and two will be continued until the May 3, 2018, Village Board meeting. Now, do I read these? I don't read these.
No, you don't have to read them, Mayor.
No. Well, that now takes us back to public discussion of agenda items. So if anyone in the public wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, a motion to recess to the Committee of the Whole would be in order. Trustee Schroder.
Motion to adjourn to the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Not adjourn. Recess. We want a recess to the Committee of the Whole.
Oh, I beg your pardon, recess.
That's okay.
Okay.
And there was a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Village Board meeting is recessed until we do the Committee of the Whole, and then we will be adjourning to executive session. Then I'll read it.
The Committee of the Whole meeting of Glendale Heights for Thursday, March 15, 2018, is called to order. The clerk, please take note who's present.
Noted.
Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda? Trustee Meritato.
Golf course.
Golf course. Okay. Any additional? Okay, is there any public comment upon any of the agenda items? Okay, there being none, we go to paragraph B, zoning administrator. 175 Army Trail Road, a recommendation to approve a variation to Section 11611D4A to increase the maximum number of wall signs per business establishment from one sign to seven. A variation to Section 11611D4B to increase the maximum square feet in area for wall signs from 1.5 square feet to 2.25 square feet. And a variance to Section 11611D4C to increase the maximum height in feet for wall signs from 16 feet to 25 feet. Ms. Coltsbrunner.
This proposal's for Target. They currently have five signs, and so the... But the variance is from the one that's permitted by code. They'd previously been approved for five. They are redoing all the signage to come concurrent with their current prototype for Target. So a majority, they'll have the Target with the Bullseye logo, and then a majority of the signs are the CVS Pharmacy, pickup here, grocery. So it's more directional sign within the facade.
Is there any discussion? May I have a motion? Mayor Jackson?
Move it to the board with the recommendation to concur.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that will be moved to the board with a recommendation to concur. Paragraph C, committee recommendations. Plan Commission, a recommendation to approve an application for conditional use in the I Industrial PUD District to allow outdoor storage of 48 33.5-pound butane tanks within a chain-link fenced enclosure located in the front yard, located on the north side of the building, located at 601 Regency Drive, Unit A. That's for Ferguson Fire and Fabrication. Ms. Coltsbrunner.
Ferguson is, has moved into the 601 Regency Building. That's the building, the Prologis Building that was recently built. A few months ago, you considered a very similar proposal from OSM, which has the other half of the building. Ferguson wants to mirror that and have propane tanks for the forklift operators, and it would have the same fencing and protection that is in place for the OSM facility.
Are there any questions? Trustee Pocak.
I'm certain the fire department checked everything out already.
Yes, sir.
Everything was...
Yes, they're fine with the proposal.
All right, thank you, Joanne.
Okay. May I have a motion? Trustee Light.
I make a motion that we move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? We will move that to the board with a recommendation to concur. And number two, a recommendation to approve an application for an annual entertainment permit to permit live entertainment on Monday through Thursday nights from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Fridays from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturdays from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sundays from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., which will consist of small musical groups playing primarily traditional European music for schnitzel plats located at 729 East North Avenue.
That's me.
That's you again? Okay.
Schnitzel Plats, as you know, has had an entertainment permit for several years for their bands. They have expanded their entertainment to Thursday nights, and in discussions with the owner, he wants to have that opportunity to perhaps add a Wednesday or a periodic Monday. And after, we, so we recommended that he amend the entertainment permit, which requires plan commission consideration and reconsideration by the board. We haven't had any issues with the activity. In further discussions with the owner, there is odd occasions where he may have a birthday party or some other special event. So he is requesting that the hours be further expanded. Just, he's not planning on doing anything on a regular basis, but just so he doesn't have to keep coming back every time there's a special occasion. And he would like to expand those hours through, Sunday through Thursday, from 11:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday from 11:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m. So again, just for those random special occasions.
Any questions? Okay, can I have a motion, please? Trustee Schroder.
To the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will move that to the board with a recommendation to concur. Trustee Meritato, golf course.
Yeah, I know Jennifer's on vacation. I talked to Steve the other day. I told him our sign on Smear Road is only half-lit.
Okay.
It's been like that for quite a while. So I'll have to follow up and see if he...
Can't just do "so moved," okay?
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
We are adjourning to executive session. Thank you, everyone.